All, Councilor Farullo, with me on the committee, Councilor Papalato, Councilor Campbell, Councilor DeMers, and Councilor Toro.
Make a motion that we read the reading of the previous meeting's minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The first item on the agenda is the Shamrock Running Club for Special Event Permit to Allow For Road Race Expense Fund on July 4, 2024, with the request for a waiver on umbrella liability insurance. We have people here to speak on the matter.
How I have to speak?
Hello, welcome.
What do I have to say?
Tell us what you don't understand.
What you're doing is why you would like the way.
Yeah, with the umbrella. It was complicated because if I had to go through the alcohol, the liability for the alcohol of the race. So I think she added on five million to the insurance instead of the two million. So I think maybe in general. No.
So it's just a road, it's just a road race and you guys will have like a beer guy?
Yes. We're not selling.
Yeah, 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 okay. And I'll make a motion that we grant the umbrella liability insurance. Waiver, yes.
No, I'll second.
Oh, I thought somebody seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now you're all set.
Thanks a lot. Next on the agenda, the Church of Luthy God for Special Event Permit for Music Concerts on June 11, 2024, and June 22. At Honk Hon, I tell Scott with the request for the waiver on the umbrella liability insurance. Somebody here to speak on the matter.
I can just speak briefly on this. It is a church group that is just going down to play some music. That's it, there's nothing else taking place.
All right, I'll make a motion that we grant the waiver of liability insurance. So send it out on the pass.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, petition, petition for the renewal of a taxi cab license for checkered cab of Woburn at 827 Main Street. It indicates. She is here, she is here. No, no, no. Church of Luthy God is here. The bet's done, right? Yeah, we keep going. All paperwork's in order, there are no complaints, in order.
Make a motion, a petition for a little sent out on the pass, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, petition for the renewal of a livery license for checkered cab in Woburn 827 Main Street, same situation.
Same motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Petition for the renewal of secondhand dealers and secondhand collectors' licenses for musto jewelers, 186 Main Street Road, all paperwork's in order.
Same motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nicely done.
Well, that's yours.
Next up is the Committee on Finance. Councilor Viola on the chair, with me on the committee is Councilor Campbell, Councilor DeMers, Councilor Farullo, and Councilor Marissa Rowan. First thing on the agenda is the reading of the minutes.
Make a motion to dispense with the reading of the previous minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the order of the sum of $219,589.15 be transferred from the drug task salary to the aut, drugs, sorry, excuse me, drug task salary, auditor salary, and mayor salary adjustment accounts to the city council, mayor salary, purchasing salary, excessive salary, city solicitor, IT salary, city clerk salary, election salary, election workers, library salary, library overtime, and SLBB slash library accounts.
Okay, yeah.
I have the city auditor Charlie Garder here with me as well. This is the end of fiscal year adjustment balancing of accounts. Obviously, there's a lot of information, there appear to be particular questions and Charlie can answer them for you.
Any committee members have any questions? So this is coming from money that we received through the drug task force? Or was it?
Listen, just to clarify, these are all the general fund line items, just several departments over the last year, these unexpected retirements, so in several departments had to pay by that payout and they had to make that worth budgeting. We also had several people doing out of grade because they were covering for superior in the office, they get paid that, that was not funny because it was an unexpected leave for that person. We also had one was a IT department, they had renegotiated his contract in which they gave the retro to more than plus any piece of salary that was after last year's budget. So that had to be done for. So the three line items that we're transferring money to was basically the auditor's office. I still have an open position for a budget person in my office. We're in the process of trying to identify some space to actually have that person be able to be in the office. So we haven't used that money this year, so that money was available. We also had the money from the drug task force that we budgeted in the city last year. We were doing like a 75-25 split for the position last year. This year, we're using the full opioid settlement funds to actually cover. So that money was still remaining and unused this year. And the remaining balance to cover all of these was the mayor's salary adjustment, which is funded every year as a way to cover these things as they do now.
Great, yeah, I just wanted to see what we were drawing for that money on because I always get concerned when we're moving money away from the drug.
Yeah, no, that's, that commitment is still there, that funding source is still there, the settlements, and I think you're gonna see even more activity from that office now. I think you'll see positive work.
Excellent, thank you. Anybody else?
Make a motion that the request be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the order that the sum of $50,000 be transferred from workers' comp account to veterans' cash aid account.
You've got this here, basically the veterans' cash aid, we never fully fund that in the budget because we do get reimbursements during the year, but we usually, by this time of year, we do a supplemental appropriation or a transfer. Workers' comp numbers actually came in a little bit lower than what we had budgeted, so we're able to use that funding instead of doing supplemental appropriation, keep your budget numbers down to the veterans' agents. So this will cover further made.
More witnesses here if you have any questions at all.
Make a motion the order be adopted.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, moving on. Number four, audit of the sum of $48,500 to be transferred from the Draper Street Sewer INI account, Draper Street T2 Signal Control Account, Dunkin' Donuts 75 Main Street Traffic Account, 307 Main Street Account, 29 Draper Street Account, LCS Development LLC Account to the Green and Nashua Street Project TEC Engineering Company Account.
Series of transfers from previously committed accounts. This is to begin the traffic study for the Green and Nashville Holman intersection that we've talked about for a while, this is with the full support of the ward council. I don't feel like to speak on it.
Yeah, I mean, this is a, an area that's been troublesome. It's in the top 5% of traffickers in metropolitan Boston. We met a few times to figure out how do we fund this, to get a road safety audit, get a short-term plan, and then a long-term plan for what we could do in that area. So we worked to see what kind of funds were available, mitigation funds, we've identified the ones that are listed here, and that's what this transaction is.
Not so much, bro.
And I applaud everyone for moving forward with this. I just want to mention, I was involved in the first couple of conversations about this, and I thought that we were gonna take an approach where we just looked at that intersection and tried to get, you know, three or four ideas rather than this bigger, you know, look at the whole picture. And I understand there was some pushback from Superintendent Duran and.
Well, we resolved that, basically, we're doing the minimum amount of work to get any type of answers to move forward at all. And that, and this was as a result of a series of conversations, and I think we're all on the same page now toward that goal.
Okay, to those four or five solutions, so it won't get lost into this big, and I know, Mary, you are a big proponent of keeping it smaller, so.
Yeah, the reality though is there's certain steps you have to take, whether you're going big or small, and this is the minimum in front of you tonight, this amount of money.
The minimum that the engineering company would take in order to do the work, you mean?
No, no, the minimum that the data that could be presented to those who approve such things, the minimum amount of data that they could live with, the state, you know, the funding sources of those who approve traffic measures.
Okay.
And we met with the consulting company to be very clear about, we need a short-term solution to try to make some quick hits on that, and then what's the grand plan, the Cadillac solution, which we get to down the line.
And through the chair to counselor. So you're comfortable that things that you want in that proposal, in the focus, that you're gonna get those things back?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm good then.
Councilor DeMers?
Just to the effect of the fact that, you know, having worked on multiple transportation projects, the key piece to the puzzle is that road safety audit. That opens us up to all the different types of funding sources or any state plans that we could also access.
Yeah, to that point, this, the grand solution to this problem is likely coming as a result of being placed on the tip. It's not something we're gonna be doing ourselves, but hopefully this road safety audit and the next steps yield some sort of.
Sure.
Solutions that could maybe at least a little bit better.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that the order is sent out on the pass.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Number five on the agenda, order that the sum of $110,000 be transferred from the cemetery interest fund to various cemetery accounts of FY 2025.
This is the standard annual transfer that funds the cemetery and their operations.
Okay, make a motion that the request be approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number six, order authorizing the mayor to accept donation from the South End Italian Club in the sum of $130,086 for the Veterans Donation Fund.
I have Veteran Service Officer Bob Davis here, he can speak to this, generous donation.
So yeah. Yes, sir. Thank you. The South End Italian Club, this is going off quite some time. October of '23, I was approached, came to fruition. January, checked, was kind of a, obviously the proceeds from sale from South End Italian Club, and their charter, there's still the founding members, and there were no founding members left, nothing in the charter around family, going to the family next in line for what their donations were going to were veteran charities. They reached out to a number of charities, etc. So the $130,000, the way we discussed with the lawyer, was to, okay, they'll go to the Department of Veteran Services, they were pretty adamant around the C, having just a blank on the C, so we have them write a check out to Department of Veteran Services, City of Woburn, which we're going to the bombing account, kind of wells, you know, the smaller things that come up, whether it's a monument that needs repairing, or something right outside of here to give them a memorial or something. Now typically, go with a fundraising event, whether it's CDAA, DAA, Princess Reuben Veterans, etc., that just kind of wells any of that, you know, that.
That's great.
Take care of our own monuments, own small things, what we're talking about cash aid, you know, veterans that are available for cash aid, chapter 115, it's a minimal amount. So that's 200 cents for a credit card you're looking for any of those funds, to apply to be approved for that, we have a ton of that, tab that over there. Fuel for the vehicle, fuel for their home, there's nothing we can do via cash aid. This as well.
That's simple.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll make a motion that the order is sent out on the pass.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Second, thank you very much.
Before we adjourn, there's one other item that may be across legally before the committee. We have an order for the sum of $100,000 to be transferred from the stabilization sped account to the sped out of district account, $100,000.
So the city, this is the matter we talked about last year. We put aside 1.8 million in potential overages within this bed account due to the hard work of Maureen Bynum, closely watching that, and she was able to reduce the overages to about 100,000, so that's what's in front of you.
You want to say it?
Yeah. Thank you. This goes hand in hand with you guys, we had asked for the question, the transfer from Stabilization 2, not the spare Stabilization 2. So we were able to increase that to 1.8 million. That was the negotiation that last year, instead of funding 1.8 million in the budget, we would hold it on our side.
Right.
And as we worked with, we were trying to reduce as much as we could, and successfully last year, there's only 100,000 dollars in that instead of potentially 1.8 million dollars that we anticipated.
Tim?
Yes.
So we literally, last year, that's what we did, we took it off their budget, took it off their books and put it on our books, which gives us quite a bit of eyeballs on, on things, right? I like it a lot.
It's definitely in the best interest of the taxpayers and the city as a whole to have the money set aside as stabilization, because it was put directly into the general fund school side, and they didn't need it for spend, it couldn't be used anywhere else.
Right, and it could cause all kinds of tax implications too, being on the school side, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Charlie, you're comfortable the recipient account is where the expenditure's gonna emerge to, up there?
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other comments?
Make a motion the order be adopted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, you stand adjourned at 6:18.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jumping into things I shouldn't be.
I saw the personnel right now.
You can do that if you'd like.
Yeah, why don't we?
It's gonna be five minutes.
Yeah, it's gonna be just five minutes. So I call the Committee on Personnel to order. Okay, thank you. On the committee is Councilor DeMers, Councilor Toro, and myself, Councilor Campbell as chair.
Make a motion to dispense with the reading of the previous meeting's minutes and approve.
Second.
All in favor? The ayes have it. We have before us the reappointment of Shannon Ryan to the Woburn Board of Registars of Voters.
Make a motion of the reappointment of Shannon Ryan to the Woburn Board of Registars of Voters, sent out on the pass.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you.
We have one more, the reappointment of Tracy A. Arjali to the Woburn Board of Registars of Voters.
I'll make a motion that we send out the reappointment of Tracy A. Arjali to the Board of Registars of Voters, on the pass.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned, thank you, thank you, Goldman.
We have liaison. So, it's right there. So we're going, can you do the minutes first?
Yes.
Can I be adjourned? Mr. McPhee? He has given the electricity community aggregation.
Make a motion.
Okay, call to order, liaison.
Make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the previous minutes.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. And first on the agenda here is order relative to electricity community aggregation under MGL 64134. Hi, how are you today?
President, just briefly, I think you have the letter from the Assistant Planner, Karen Smith, in your pocket. That outlines the process thus far, why we're here tonight. Basically, in a nutshell, the proposal in front of you, which would grant me the permission to explore aggregation, has come up before, it came up when I was on the council, it's supported, we authorized, got the opportunity to pursue, and there was some introductory step taken, and then it kind of fell by the wayside, so we decided to explore it again. I think we probably had the blessing previously by way of the council's vote, but we wanted to be upfront and revisit it, see if there were any additional questions in the time since this was first passed. Ms. McPhee is our sustainability consultant for the city. She is helping to guide us through this process. She's available tonight to answer any questions if I may.
Questions?
I'll just make a comment, I'm just seeing this document now, so if I had any questions, I don't really have time to go through it, but I assume that we will be able to ask questions at a later time, after we've had time to go through the package, or? Sure, or if you'd like to give me a two-minute background? Oh, I would love that, I'm not the chairman, but I would love that. Thank you so much. It's about hour and a half of stuff, but I think we can boil it. Thank you, thank you. So the bottom line is, there's a process called Community Choice Electricity Aggregation. It's basically like a group purchase, the reason you would go to BJ's instead of going to CVS to buy, you know, just a regular item, you'd go to BJ's because it's less expensive because everybody's pooling their resources. So the state legislature in the late 90s allowed municipalities to do the same thing for electricity on behalf of their residents, and that's been picking up steam all over the state, now there's over 170 municipalities that have aggregations now. So Stone Room, for example, Medford, Arlington, lots of neighboring communities are doing this, so you would still get your bill from Eversource, Eversource still owns the wires, they're basically just buying the supply, so just the way the city buys supply from, they don't go through Eversource, right, Eversource charges more, so the city aggregates its usage across all the schools, all the municipal, and Arazio goes out and gets the best price he can, right? Same thing for natural gas, same thing for gasoline, so, it's just like that, but on behalf of the residents, the state legislature said, we're gonna allow municipalities to go out on behalf of the residents, so why would you do this? Number one, it's, it's become this whole thing of seniors get approached by for-profit companies saying, we're gonna get you this great rate, they call it, dinnertime, people are, they just want to hang up, so then they sign up, after six months, the rate goes through the roof, so we have a big problem with seniors really being taken advantage of, so that's number one. If, once a city or town goes on an aggregation, they get off those lists because they, the for-profit companies know that the residents are gonna get a better deal through this aggregation. The other reason is the state legislature, the way Eversource has to go out to bid, they have to go out to bid every year twice, every six months, Eversource's price changes, they have to, and guess what, everybody knows exactly what day they're gonna go out, so do they get the lowest price? They do not get the lowest price, so that's the way these aggregations can get a better price than Eversource. So in the aggregations, should Woburn do a community choice aggregation, the first thing you do is you get a broker, just like Arazio has a broker that helps him call the shots when you go out for a natural gas price, when you, so you get good advice. And then when you go out for a bid, the bid comes back for six months, 12 months, 18 months, all the way up to three years, so if you get a good price, you're not stuck with the every six months, you can get a good price and stick with it for three years, so those are predictable. So this is why the for-profit people say, you know, if you're on an aggregation, they just don't even bother calling, because there's a system in place for residents to really benefit from this. So in this packet, if you want to look at it later, there's examples of the different neighboring towns, the rates that they've had over time, which you'll see are flat, they get like a three-year contract, and then you'll see the Eversource basic rate going like this. So if Woburn pursues this, it's a long process, you have to go before the DPU, Department of Energy, there's a bunch of things, but then, once you actually go out to bid, it's an opt-out program. So the whole city, it's residents and the small businesses, the whole city would participate, but if you don't want to participate, no problem, you just say, I'm out, forget it, and you can opt back in anytime. So if, for example, you get a dud bid one time, then you could, we could, the mayor can say, everybody, duh, forget it, everybody opt out, but that really hasn't happened. If you take a look at the different charts, I think there's some Stone Room rates in there, some Winchester rates in there, some Medford rates in there, basically, people are saving on average about $250 a year per household because of this predictability thing, because Eversource, the prices vary, but basically, they go up and up and up, so if you can lock in a good price, and the other thing is, we don't have to go out to bid at a date certain, so we listen to the broker, and then when the broker says, oh my gosh, we've got really good low prices now, let's go out to bid, then quick, we go out to bid and the broker insists to go out to bid, so it's, they're pretty good at calling it. So on average, towns are saving, you know, millions of dollars for their residents over time, and at the very least, you've got that predictability, you don't have Eversource, I don't know if you remember, last winter, we had this big spike, and all of a sudden the prices just went nuts, so especially for seniors on a fixed income, that's not a fun thing. Anyway, so that's the, that's the, that's the bulk of it, and take a look at the other towns, what it looks like, but basically, you know, over half the residents in the Commonwealth are in some kind of municipal aggregation, Boston, Medford, I think Quincy's on one, anyway, that's, that's the, the short version, thank you.
Thank you, if you don't mind taking a few questions.
No problem.
Councilor Toro, first, you with the first.
Thank you, thank you first off for coming, giving us some of this information. I just have a couple of quick questions, you mentioned the process is long, roughly, how long are we talking, is it? Six months, a year?
Walton and Walton are the Mitchell Lakes communities that have gone through this, and Walton, it took like close to two years. So if we get rolling, it's pretty rapid until it goes to DPU, and DPU is the wild part, but DPU is promising that they'll go faster, but it considered DPU for a year, 18 months, but they're promising they'll speed it up, so I can't really. I would say at least 18 months.
Okay, and if, if we were to move forward with this, you mentioned that all the residents get auto enrolled in this program, do you provide notification, or is that the city side that provides notification to allow them?
Actually, DPU has a mandated postcard that is, quite honestly, a bit confusing, so that's where the city would interact, we would train people in the city hall, I guess it might be the planning office, but whoever, a few people to be able to answer the phone, so they would get an opt-out card that's written exactly the way the DPU says, and then depending on the broker, a broker can help send out another letter or another card that's in plain English, that would say, here's what we're doing, you can opt out if you want, fill this out, call this number, and then as people have questions, like I would say, we definitely want people at the senior center to be informed and able to answer questions, but then probably also somebody at the city hall to be able to answer questions, but basically, you know, a bunch of people will opt up, up front, but then when they see that the rates are actually better over time, people wind up opting back in. So on average, I think across my communities, about 85% of people stay in initially, and then it creeps up to 90, 95%, when people say, see, the lights still turn on, my neighbor's getting a better rate, you know, there's initially this, what are you doing to me kind of thing, but then the rates just stay stable for three years instead of the up and down and up and down.
Two other quick questions, so it says on average, or there's a net savings, roughly it could be up $250, I see some of these numbers, 26.5 million since 2021 for Walton, so it seems like it's, it's a good savings for the residents of Woburn, which is awesome. Is there any additional benefit for the city by enrolling? Is there any strictly a benefit, strictly a savings for the residents of Woburn?
Correct, correct. I would add that those numbers, you can't guarantee savings if you don't know whatever source the rate's gonna be, so what you can guarantee is stability, that when you sign a contract, that number, it's gonna stay that number, and we could also say, we promise we'll be straight with you, if Eversource miraculously comes in with some rock bottom rate, we'll tell everybody and say, okay, opt out, opt back in in six months when the rate goes up again.
And then the last question I have, you reference a broker that the city, similar to like Arazio would have for, on the city, do you, is Good Energy that broker, or is, do you help facilitate us entering the program, then we have to go and find a broker?
Good Energy is one of those brokers, there are several in the state, Good Energy seems to have most of the contracts in this area, and they've done a good job following the dates and getting good prices, so there are choices to be made, but that's one of the first things you do, is sign up and get somebody on your side.
Okay, thank you.
Clarify, if I could, Ms. McPhee is our sustainability consultant, helping us navigate through this process with, for this fight with it.
Exactly.
So you would help us choose, I'm assuming with the mayor, whoever he did. So you would help us choose, I'm assuming with the mayor, whoever he did, designate one of those brokers?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you for answering my questions.
That's it?
Thank you.
Before I go to Counselor DeMears, just for clarification from the chair, DPU, Department of Utilities?
Yes, sorry, Department of Public Utilities, correct.
Counselor DeMears.
Well, thank you. I, I mean, I think anytime we have the opportunity where we can find unique ways in which we can garner any type of savings for the consumers and the taxpayers of the city movement is a good idea. Ever since I've been on the council, I've received those auto-generated emails about this issue from folks that are involved in green energy movements and so forth. This, just being able to group purchase, I know through the time I've been on the council talking with Arazio DeLuca, our purchasing agent, he does a really good job of getting out there and getting Woburn the best rate they possibly can and shopping around with different brokers and so forth. And we've saved a lot since he's come to Woburn relative to those for, you know, the heating oil, natural gas, and so forth in the city. So I think moving forward this way with electricity, I can only see the benefits. And it really does give the community a choice. Folks can opt out. It puts them in the driver's seat when it comes to their financial decisions. And anytime we can do that, and if you're looking at, once we get running up this, anywhere even up to $250 a household, is going to be, is going to be a great, a cheap savings moving forward. So I, I plan on supporting the order this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell.
So, so let me ask, I think it's a great program, and anything we could do to cut down the electric bills for our residents, I'm supportive. I'm looking at, you know, the, the performance summary for the surrounding cities and towns. I'm impressed with the numbers, especially Walton. That would be nice. That'd be nice for us. My question, though, is, can Eversource play with the delivery charge? Because since we're using the utilities and the hardware, can they play the game with their, because I, I've looked at my bill, and I've seen that my delivery charge, in some instances, was more than my usage. And that tripped me up. I was like, what? How long does that take to pay that poll across the street? It's only $800. Like, what are you charging? So can they play a game with their delivery charge just to offset their loss?
I can't speak to Eversource and how they set those rates. So this, on your bill, this comes in as, it's called the supply line. So right now, most people, the supply would say Eversource unless they've signed up for one of these for-profit things. And unfortunately, we don't have a way of affecting any of those other lines, the demand, the delivery, all those charges. We don't have a way of doing it, nor do we have a lot of transparency on how they set it. But I don't think they said it specifically, you know, this town went on an aggregation, so we're going to try to make it up there. Because now over half the state is on aggregations. And the other thing is, Eversource will look you in the eye and put their hand on a stack of bibles and say, we make no money on selling electricity. So they, they claim that this, you know, they're selling electricity out of goodness of their hearts, and they're making their money on those other, the demand distribution, all the other lines. So I kind of doubt that. That's what they would do.
Which follows up with, I mean, do we have somebody with, with a little bit more muscle, like the federal government, that, that approves stuff like this? Or are the energy companies-
Or the DPU.
The DPU will support this, but I know that the utility companies are pretty strong lobbyists. So is there something that they could do too?
They report into DPU. So DPU is the one that negotiates all that stuff with them, and I think they have that transparency back too. Because it's not just, it's not just Woburn has the distribution. It's, plus the, you know, I think it's NEMA, Northeast Mass. Those rates would be unified for Northeast Mass, Southeast Mass, there's about six.
And regulating these types of things is the very reason why DPU exists. So that would be their job to make sure Eversource is not manipulating numbers or okay, it's a flake race or something like that.
Next.
Thank you.
Counselor Campbell. I'm sorry.
Yes, that was my question, Counselor DeMiero. I think that would be my fear, that Eversource would decide to charge, to increase their rates, almost like a penalty in a sense. Because even though you say that, or they say, that they're not making money off of electricity, I kind of don't believe that. I mean, they must be making something from it. So as their profits go down, they're going to try to make some money back, which then, of course, they could increase exactly with what you were talking about. But I almost feel like that's a gamble we, we have to take, because maybe there still would be enough benefit for the residents, even with the increases that Eversource could put in, in the future.
Yeah, you're right.
Yes.
You're right. Eversource is regulated by the DPU. DPU was established by the legislature, and the legislature created the law that allows communities to act. So there's a, there's a goal here-
Yep.
-from the legislature to make sure the communities give their residents a fair shake.
Right.
And if the, the private entities begin to gouge, that's why DPU exists.
Right.
To make sure that stuff gets-
Okay.
-regulated.
Okay.
Does that mean that they contain every single possible increase? I don't know. It's a state agency, but that's its mission, Steve.
Right. Yeah, okay. I mean, that's great. And I do think, why not try it? I think it's, it sounds like it would be great for the residents. I would like to suggest for the seniors, as I'm getting older, and we're getting so much mail and everything else, that somehow we figure out a way to, when these things get mailed out, to really somehow, maybe the city would put something together, an informational package or something to explain what's going on so that they don't think that it's another piece of just junk mail or somebody trying to sell them something.
We have presentations at the senior center.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that would be wonderful.
Yeah. And we even call them, you can call them a bring-a-bill, because once you start reading and reach your point, there's so many different lines on that thing. Then, so you say, let's have a bring-a-bill, bring your electricity bill in, the seniors can, you know, have people take a look at it and be able to say, yes, you're on, you know, the Woburn power, or no, you're on, you know, signed up for something that you don't even remember you can sign up for.
Right.
We can help you get out of it, or-
That would be great, because as you know, there are so many people, like you said, that are trying to scam the seniors. And they might think this is another one of those scams, so I'm not going to sign up for it, so-
It'd be a whole campaign.
That would be great. Okay. That, I think, that's it for right now. Thank you.
Counselor Mercer.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you for the, I'm going to support this 100% tonight. I think it's a great idea. And I'm glad to hear it's all residents as well. You mentioned small businesses. So just for small businesses, and what's, do we have a, does DPU have a definition of what that is?
Rate codes. It's the rate codes on the bill. So it's the very smallest businesses.
Okay. So it's determined by their code that they have?
Yeah, the resident, residential codes, and then the various-
Okay, so it's not left to us to decide that?
No, because weaker businesses often have that same, they've aggregated their electricity and they've gotten, you know, constellation if somebody is already their supplier.
Right.
Might have already done that.
Okay. And I just wanted to also reiterate what Counselor Campbell said about the, you mentioned the mailer from DPU is somewhat confusing. So anything that the city can do to make it less confusing before that even goes out, I would support 100%.
We've done a variety of things in a variety of communities. We can talk about that as the time comes. Mail out a postcard from the city at the same time that things come out, or just in advance of it. But by law, we have to mail this one.
The one thing, right, okay. And my last question, is there a broker fee?
I think the broker makes like .001 cents on the actual usage. So there's no fee that the city pays or that the residents can leave on the bills from the, from the supplier.
Okay. Thank you.
Before we go to Counselor DeMears, on the question about letting the seniors, residents know, I see our outreach coordinator, Samantha Stone, nodding her head over there, that maybe that's something she can help out with, just so-
Absolutely.
She's been in the meetings with us. She's well-versed on preparing to go as soon as we're ready.
And I had no doubt about that, but those things also cost money. So I just want to make sure there's a commitment from the city that there will be some financial support for those mailers, however we do them. That's all.
Good point. Thank you. Counselor DeMears and then Counselor Popolot.
So Susan, to my knowledge, doesn't DPU also regulate the rate increases for utilities? Don't they have to provide the proposed rate increases?
Exactly.
So I think, I think, I think that's, goes part and parcel with the concern about, you know, will they shift those rates somewhere else? DPU, they, they do have to propose those, excuse me, they do have to, the utilities have to propose those to DPU. So DPU at any time could notice any type of gouging or shifting in, in the reason, in your bill, basically. They could deny it. I don't remember them ever denying it. But I think it actually probably to, 11, they may have had one on national grid, but it was when national, natural gas spiked ridiculously, and I think the state kind of put the brakes on it. We all took a concerted sigh of relief. But that, that's the function that the Department of Public Utilities has.
Yeah, okay.
Counselor Popolot.
Yep. It seems like a great program, but I have a couple of skeptical-type questions. So it feels like it's too good to be true. Right? So have you ever had communities opt in and then opt out?
That happened once with Melrose. Melrose was the first municipality to go down this path. So I don't even know when it was, maybe 2009? And they made this same commitment, if, if they were ever underwater, if it was ever better to get out, they were going to tell all their residents. And that's what they did. But then they had to go through this whole DPU process again. So they basically shut the program down because the, they're a national grid electricity town. So national grids rates were less than the municipal aggregation rate. So they said, okay, that's it, we'll shut it down. Then they had to start over again, apply again, and set up the whole thing again. So it has happened that one time.
But they went back.
And then they went back, and they're happy as clams. I don't know if it's one of the ones that we got here, but that's a lot of these communities who use Good Energy, so we get to the stats.
So why would a community not do this?
Well, there's power and lights. So that's about 35 communities who have power and lights, and they already have, you know, pretty sharp rates because they're managing their own, they don't have that national grid Eversource thing. There's 35. And then about 170 already, and it's dropped to about 200. So, you know, it's a process.
Something like that.
It's a process. And it also takes the city saying, we want to do this on behalf of our residents. And it's not a place that cities have always been, you know, with utilities.
And I said, excuse me, in the beginning, we did this already. We approved it. We said, go ahead, do it. Couple of starts, just didn't follow all the evidence. And we're bringing it back up again. We're going to step forward.
Yep. Seems like an awesome program. I totally agree with you. Just, you've asked us, right?
Yes, Counselor Viola.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Anytime we can save our seniors and those most vulnerable people money off their electric or whatever, I think it's a great idea. One question I do have is, how would a resident know what the supplier cost would be, say, from Eversource if they were enrolled?
So that's another commitment that we could work with the broker on, to say, okay, broker, when we're getting this bid, what if a year from now, Eversource has a sharper price? And the brokers will pay for communication with the residents. So you could commit to your residents that every January, because Eversource's new rates come out, you know, come at the beginning of the year, we could say, every January, we're going to touch base and let you know what those rates look like and how Woburn Power is doing compared to Eversource. So it, you can make it as a commitment to your residents, or you could have, you know, they'll, the brokers will pay to print stuff. So you could print stuff and have bookmarks sitting at the library and the senior center and, you know, just kind of keep the word out there, hand it out in, you know, every office here, so if they come to elections or whatever, you know, just kind of have it out there. It could be in a water bill. You could have a flyer just, you know, twice a year, we're going to keep you in touch. Here's what Eversource rate is. And then it's boring because, you know, hopefully we have a good rate for three years. Here we are, here's Eversource, here's Eversource, here's Eversource. That tends to be what it's, but you can make a commitment to stay in touch with the residents however you want to stay.
I definitely think keeping the residents informed of the best choice possible is the best idea, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? What's the will of the-
I'll make a motion that the order relative to electricity, community aggregation, send out a second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
That passes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and move out of order, the order to review non-union department head salary.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Look, take it, so we'll-
Good, how's everybody?
Thank you for your time.
So my predecessor used to handle this a lot, the prior city clerk, Phil Campbell. So I actually have to put this on the agenda after the presidential election, because it was a little crazy in March. So generally, the process for non-department union heads, non-union department heads, excuse me, there's no negotiating. It's basically the city council sets their salary in the statute 2-20, the municipal code. I just want to come and explain the process a little bit, because there are a couple new members, and we haven't done this probably since 2022, I believe. So in the code, it was in 2015, the code for the section was updated a little bit, where it was required to have, by the second meeting in March every year, that the city council would meet on these salaries and discuss them. Didn't have to raise them, but at least discuss them every year, since the unions are having discussions pretty much regularly with the negotiating teams. So 2-24 explains that, and the last time, the salary in 2-180 is where the, all of the salaries are for people that are not non-union. So you'll see different positions, and my position's in there, the city auditor's in there, the HR director, a library director, city solicitor, and then city superintendent of public works is what you generally would vote on for department salaries, once, the other ones usually the unions settle. Prior, there were some, in prior, there were some talk about whether to have completely fall with the team to union, because a lot of the department heads are in the team to union. I don't know what happened with that, you know, for whatever reason, it didn't work out. I think some of it had to do with, then we're not paying members of the union and whatnot. And the city council has to stay out of union issues as well, so it's part of the charter. So I just wanted to come to let you know that we have to have discussions with you in order for these positions, you know, such myself have to come before you to talk about salary negotiations, negotiations or salaries in general, while others can do it kind of in private. So I just want to let you know, it's a public forum for us, so we would have to come to So we would have to come to you to do this. Traditionally, what happens the last few years, at least when I was in the council, and I probably thoroughly speak to this, consumers will speak to this, is that, um, uh, they traditionally wait until after the unions have settled and see what percentage they have received for different raises and whatnot. And then an order would come down, very similar to that, and you would adjust accordingly. A lot of times, the last recent years, um, and the mayor can speak to this too. It's usually retroactive for one year, and then for the following year, there's a, there's different years going up. We, we tend to be retroactive at least one year, and then forward a couple of years when it comes to salaries. So if you ever want to look at two one dash one eighty, that has all the salaries in there, and other positions as well, but generally, that happens every time around the same cycle as the non-unions. I mean, it's the unions do. Just wanna, I think I touched base on anything. I don't know if anyone had any questions. Obviously, the union's still negotiating. So I just wanted to bring that before you.
Thank you, Counselor Deming.
Can you mention the HR, is the HR director a non-union?
Correct.
I was gonna say, it would be great if we could rely on the HR director to put together a study of some surrounding cities and towns and what the, um, department head salaries are, but I guess that's something that we can do. Just to take a look at it.
Yeah, it's easy enough.
To remain on par with other communities.
Yeah, I think we've done some of that in the past.
I think it's provisioned, just put in there so that you're constantly looking into it, and so you don't have to, you can go months and years potentially, if you're not checking in and stuff like that, so. Any questions? I did, I just wanted, I told the HR directors, we're coming down, just talk overview of it all. There are other members, obviously, if you have questions offline, you can talk to those individual members. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So those are the traditional ones that come down. Um, obviously, there's some other ones that get raised during the, raised or moved around a little bit when a new position came, comes in, or, um, a raise was off, off cycle or whatnot, you can call that too, so that happens as well. Okay?
Okay.
Any other questions for Clark Higgins?
No, so eventually, an order would come down eventually, that traditionally, the city council president or the ordinance chair has supported. But usually, everyone's actually based on that, so.
So you do, do me a favor and keep that timeline, let me know.
I'm sure Charlie Guard and myself would keep you entertained.
Thank you.
Yes.
I appreciate it. Yes, Counselor Deming.
Uh, do we need action on this particular?
No, I just wanted to bring your attention. You can, you can place it in file. Once an order comes in, an order would have to be filed before the city council.
Understood.
Just like any other one, the municipal code change, so it'd take two readings.
Make a motion that the order to review non-union department head salaries be placed in file.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
That passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
I'll make a motion to return the regular.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
The third item on our agenda is presentation and public comment period. We got the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Laws, New Zoning Requirements and Guidelines, and how they affect the city of Woburn.
President Dillon?
Yes.
It's not really a public comment, right? Because we don't have anything formally in front of us to comment on. It's, uh, just a committee.
An update, shall we say?
Yeah.
So I'll correct it and say an update on the MBTA Communities public.
Yeah, because technically, we don't, we don't have anything yet.
Thank you for the application. How are you?
Yeah, absolutely.
How are you?
Always, John. We want the update, John.
I do have some update materials here. Motion to accept, McAdam.
Second.
Motion and a second, to.
Aye.
The committee, all in favor.
Aye. Oh, thank you. I don't know if the mayor wants.
Do you have one?
We need one more.
John, you have another one?
Here you go.
You're welcome, sir.
Yep, no problem.
You're on the floor, sir.
So this first page here, that's a memo that was forwarded to me from our consultant, Jeff Davis. He's handling, um, the technicals with three A appliance for Woburn. Real quickly, uh, the last time we met, we went over these five maps that are included here. And what Jeff Davis did, he finally crunched the numbers for the overlay district that was proposed. It seemed to have some consensus behind it, and that was originally proposed from Lou. And it's a fifty-four acre parcel of land. And all of the parcels involved with that proposed overlay district, they were located on the east side of the railroad line, with Anderson Station being the center of that district. So that's all in this memo. It's referred to as Scenario Five. And Scenario Five is depicted on the last map that you have in your packet tonight. And as you can see, the northern portion of the overlay district, proposed overlay district, does extend past the point five, the half mile radius from Anderson. But that's all right too, because seventy-five percent of the density of Woburn to be in compliance is located within that half mile. So you can extend, uh, beyond that half mile, as long as the overlay district is contiguous. So that, Scenario Five, is what Jeff Davis has concluded and calculated using three A statutory language as well as, um, the guideline language, as it pertains, as both pertain to Woburn, complying with three A. So that's a good starting point. We now know that the density of twenty-six hundred and thirty-one units of multifamily housing can be located, at least theoretically, and in accordance with the draft zoning ordinance. And that draft zoning ordinance complies with forty R. already. Doesn't extend beyond seven stories or eighty feet of any multifamily building. We're not going twelve stories or fifteen stories. We're staying within the highest allowance of stories in the forty R. district.
That's right.
Yeah, which is property already is included as, as part of. Now, everybody understands that correctly. The other, uh, maps, and everybody did get copies of these, again, presented at our last meeting. Scenario one, um, that includes the full half mile radius, again, with Anderson Station at the epicenter. And that's on both sides of the rail line, east and west, and going north and south, with the center being Anderson. That's your half mile radius. And all of those mauve colored lots within that half mile radius, all of those lots are entirely within the radius itself. So that's a fully compliant, uh, half mile radius if the city ultimately choo chooses that as a overlay district. The, the, the things to take into consideration here, the fifty-four acre parcel that's being considered, that provides for sixty-two units of multifamily housing per acre. The minimum requirement is fifteen units per acre, per three A. So obviously, the farther you spread out the area, the less dense you would have per acre. But Jeff Davis does point out some really important factoids in his memo. Who really cares about the density number? It's within compliance of our existing zoning, so three A, the overlay district that's being proposed, corresponds with what we already covered. The only thing is, usually, these multifamily developments aren't nearly that dense. And, and again, always to keep in mind, this is only Woburn being required to create an overlay district. We're not required to build it. And, you know, we really wanted to study this, and, you know, put it in the highest, newest density of development that's within compliance of three A. You know, it's less likely, if any, multifamily being developed or, or less units being developed. And I'm, I was reading a little bit of a communication coming into this meeting tonight, and someone's proposing, why not go down to the Woburn Mall here? And, uh, just so that, it's within the Mishwam Road, um, station area, that is a compliant, three A compliant area for Mishwam Station, even though it's theoretically closed or in fact closed. Nobody really actually knows whether a train stops here, here and there. But if the city wanted to look at that area, Mishwam Station, and the radius involved with that, um, you can do that too. And again, I gotta emphasize, none of this has been worked out with anybody. And it's the city council ultimately, after you receive input from the planning board after their public hearing. City council holds their public hearing, and then you deliberate what you ultimately want the overlay district, or districts to be. So I'm giving you an update that will lead into further debate and discussion on the whole.
Counselor Bill.
Director Cashel, on that point that the city council will deliberate and, I'm not sure there's a lot of room for deliberation, right? Based on the requirements of state, right? So that's why, correct me if I'm wrong, so that's why we're working with a consultant who literally was supplied by the state and who has the state's interests in mind. They're helping to write this ordinance, so the state will say, yes, this pass, this passes muster. So the city council's ability to change any of that is really, we don't have the ability to change any, any of it based on the guidelines that they've set. And, and that was my understanding. If something has changed, please correct me.
Yeah, and nothing has changed.
Okay, thank you, thank you, yep.
So there are certain language, language criteria of the statute in the guidelines that we do have to comply with. Number one, seventy-five percent, again, in accordance with the statute and the guidelines. Seventy-five percent of the overlay district or districts for Woburn, because of the transit orientation of the statutory language. Seventy-five percent of the overlay has to be located within a half mile radius of Anderson.
Yes.
Or, for sure.
No, I understand that.
And then the other twenty-five percent, and we're talking, again, theoretically, twenty-six hundred and thirty-one units. So six hundred and somewhat units, twenty-five percent of the total can be located throughout the city. There's no restriction for that twenty-five percent to be within the half radius of Anderson, Mishwam. So we could put some units in, you know, it has to meet certain acreage criteria, it's five acres. So you could put a five acre district, um, allowing for maybe two hundred units in the central square, just for example. West side, four corners area, you could designate an area over there for two hundred, five, whatever. But that twenty-five percent, by discussion, deliberation, and truly understanding this whole thing, that we have to, you know, understand. The ultimate decision of that twenty-five percent of the total is up to the city, and the city can create a hybrid of twenty-six hundred and thirty-one unit capacity, uh, within the city. In terms of location in the city, it's just that we have to comply only with the seventy-five percent.
So, um, we still have the floor, President?
Yes, we do.
So will you be bringing different options to the city council, not just to the city council? Because at some point, we need to have an actual public meeting with the public, not at the city council, maybe at the high school or wherever it's going to be, sponsored by the planning office and the mayor's office, get people to come out and look at what our choices are. And then go from there. And, and so my next, my question is, when, what is our submission date, Director Cashel? When is the deadline?
Well, the deadline for action as it stands.
The first round.
If it's not further amended by a legislature working with the government.
Sure, okay.
If it's not amended December thirty-first of this year.
But don't we have to take action, um, before that? Ninety days before then, we have to submit something?
Yeah, I mean, we're taking action right now, and it's the speaker. But, you know, I guess I could call up state officials tomorrow and say, hey, you know, we had a meeting last night. We went over, um, the preliminary numbers that were derived at by local consulting, uh, firm. And this is what we've come up with so far. Again, all of this.
The council has, has done nothing to this point, because nothing is formally in front of us. So in, so that's all I'm trying to understand, John, at one.
This discussion.
At what point?
They might want to say something.
Sure. At what? Right, um, at what point will we have some formal documents in front of us that we can start deliberating on? And I, and I assume that would be based on deadlines. And I, and I know that there was a ninety day deadline before the December deadline. Is that still the case, Mayor? Can I just make a quick, just a quick comment? We have done something. It's not that we've done nothing.
No, I didn't say, Counselor Campbell, I didn't say we didn't do anything.
You did, you said we did nothing.
But we have, no, we, no, technically, technically, we don't have anything to vote on in front of us. We're not deliberating anything. That's my only, my only.
Okay, I just want to make sure of it.
When you're still at the floor, then I'm gonna ask Counselor Demers to let Mayor Khan in, and if you would, thank you.
I would appreciate if I could finish my comment.
Well, you, you, can you hold that comment?
I can hold it. That's, that's all I was trying to say.
Yeah, okay.
We have not been presented technically with anything to formally, from, from a city clerk's perspective, that we can actually.
No, that is correct. I just wanted to make sure, because you said we've done, nothing's been done.
Director Cashel has done an amazing job, and so has Jeff Davis, and I thank you for that. So I hope you didn't construe that as we haven't done anything. Technically, there's nothing in front of us, John. That's all I'm saying.
Right.
Okay.
If I, if I get it.
Yes.
But you can, please.
Just, just so we're all clear, I, I don't want to repeat myself, but I think I need to. State law requires that the city of Woburn pass a zoning ordinance. This is the body that passes zoning ordinance changes, the city council. In many other communities, the city council drafted this response. They did, the ordinance committee brainstormed, created maps, and researched the language the state requires, and they wrote an ordinance.
Which cities have done that? Because most of them have, have hired consultants to help them a year ago.
The city councils in those cities did.
But they hired consultants.
Again, uh, we're talking about ordinance. The city council is in charge of ordinances in Woburn. A year and a half, two years ago, in this community, the former mayor and the former planning director responded to the state and said, we are going to comply. Now, that's after we initially said we weren't going to comply. We changed our tune and we said, we are going to comply, and this is how we're going to comply. We're going to create a small committee, and we're gonna craft an ordinance that we will then share with the planning board and the city council, just like we would any ordinance change, and those two bodies would review and vote. If we hadn't taken that approach initially as a community, it would have simply been the ordinance committee writing up an ordinance, sending it over to the planning board for their process. That, that's how ordinances are done. It's an ordinance.
I, I understand that, Mayor. I, I've been doing this for a while too. But at the end of the day, this is not just an ordinance. In every other community, and I know we were behind, we were behind, every other community, you had to get help because you couldn't just write it on your own, because it wouldn't pass muster, because there's so many.
It easily could have. If you wanted, simply write it in accordance with the, the template that they have.
But that's what Jeff Davis is doing right now.
No, he's not.
He's absolutely doing that.
Sure, yeah, so if, if you, if you have the experience, you, you can write these ordinances because there's a template that's been produced by the executive office of housing.
Right.
So every community is pretty much drafting the same zoning ordinance or zoning bylaw based on the template. So what I did for Woburn, and I've been writing zoning ordinances way over thirty years. So you grab hold of one of these template ordinances, right? And it's the same for any type of zoning ordinance. And I fashioned it for Woburn. What I found out, looking at the zoning ordinance, uh, the next section, new section, uh, to, that would be added to the zoning ordinance is section thirty-four. It ends right now at thirty-three, so I created new section, proposed section thirty-three. And it has all of the language, including the dimensional requirements for the overlay district and for, uh, the use table. The use table has been amended. So the ordinance is in place in draft four, for an overlay district or overlay districts that could result from what we're get, getting into, right? So it's all, that's all ready to go. What we need to do is group, and whether we create an ad, our committee for this made up of council members and planning board members and members of public, we get into that. We get into that, and we can do that work over the summer months, probably finish everything up post-Labor Day, and still have plenty of time to have the planning board public hearing, city council public hearing, and thoroughly adopt a zoning ordinance for three A in the overlay district. What I'd like to do as a suggestion to this body is, do you want to stick with those lots in alcohol moves, uh, overlay district? That's the smallest area that complies with three A. And one of the more interesting observations, assumed observations, again, by Bill, is that we don't want to impact any of our industrial, commercial acreage anymore than we absolutely have to relative to complying with three A, because we're, you know, biting off our nose, our face. You know, we don't want to do that. We don't want to waste any of our valuable, buildable acreage, um, in Woburn. Any more than we have to relative to complying with this statute. So that's how we do it. You, you could put all one hundred percent, and again, it's all theoretical. You, you could put all one hundred percent, and again, it's all theoretical, it's not that it's gonna be built, but a, a chunk of it very well may be built over time. But, you know, we're not sacrificing a hundred acres to do fifty-four acres, we're not sacrificing a thousand acres multi-family, you know, to be developed into multifamily. Then could be taking away, you know, much valuable use, higher, better uses of land that produce more tax revenue, more jobs, uh, more, more personal, uh, property taxes for the city. You know, we always should be looking at the most bang for the buck when we're dealing with development.
So, so, um, John, you have an ordinance almost ready to go.
Just needs to be.
And to the mayor's point, we do have an ordinance committee, we don't need to reinvent the, the wheel. So I'll, I'll go back to my initial question. When will you have something that we can, that you'll file?
See, that's the thing I want to clarify.
So the, so the ordinance committee can.
The, the, the thought that John and Mike have this great plan that we, we, we hope you'll bless. This isn't the John and Mike plan, this is the city of Waukegan's response to the MBTA Communities Law. The template language is the easy part, this is the tough part. Where do you want to put it? How dense do you want it to be? How many units do you want there to be? This body, with the help of the planning board, will decide that. We can put something in front of you tonight, yeah, but then, then you have to do what you need to do it.
Right.
Like which of these plans do you like? And further.
At the end of the day, Mayor, it, it, it doesn't get down to what do we like today, what do we like tomorrow? It gets down to, you have to bring it down to the council, and then we'll deliberate, the public will weigh in, that's, that's how it works, you, you pointed it out, that's how it works, right? So send it down, we, we've given input. We, I'd like to see a couple of scenarios, honestly, I think, I know, but these are the scenarios, right? But, 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 what am I, am I saying this the wrong way? We need something formal.
Yes, please. What we could do tonight, and at, you know, I don't know if you're right or what, but all we need, for me to move forward and give you the product that you see, is for this body tonight to say, John, go ahead, make Lou's zoning overlay district fifty-four acres, all of the lots on the east side of the tracks as depicted in scenario five, that's what we want you to do, and attach the associated zoning ordinance to that as your proposal for the city council to start taking official action on it. Once you guys decide that, then you could request the planning board to hold the project.
I just want to be very clear for the rest of the council, if anybody's paying attention, I just want to be very, I just want to be very clear for the rest of the city council. I am happy to talk about where these things should go, I am happy to give some advice, but I will not, will not support us cowed to the state on this, no matter what. I have made myself very clear from the beginning that I thought we should be negotiating with the governor, that we should be hiring our own legal team to figure, to at least help us with this thing. So if you're coming down here and saying, oh, you guys tell us what to do, I, I'm not putting my name on this. I still think we should be pushing back.
So.
So, I mean, that's, I'm, I'm, thank you, I'm, I'm done, President, John.
To maybe clarify, do you mind me before you.
No, go right, right, go right ahead, Mr. President.
Let's look at the process, the process is, we have something here that may be to go forward, but we still have to deliberate on it. And by December thirty-first, we have to decide whether to vote to go with that, or if the council wishes, and there's so many on the council that wants to vote, to not be part of it. Does any of us, this tie us in on a final vote by December thirty-first that we can say, we decided differently, we tried, we worked at it, we don't want to be part of this? If we voted on that, does this tie us in?
You, you always have that option, again, to, to the process. Any ordinance, zoning ordinance change in Waukegan gets looked at by the planning board. That's the first step, they have a public hearing, they take a vote to recommend to this city council what they think you should do, the proposed zoning ordinance change. Then this council can either accept that planning board recommendation, completely ignore it, start over from scratch and do whatever it wants.
Thank you.
Always have that authority with the zoning ordinance. So to, to answer your question, if this committee does not want to comply with the MBTA Communities Law, this council, it does not have to, they can say, no, we're done, we're not supported.
Even after we do the work and, now we're working.
That's the final vote, that's all these town meetings we're going through right now, they're deciding whether they comply or not. All, to, to finish my thought from earlier, because of the way it has played out here in Waukegan, where there was a, a response to the state on behalf of our city, it said, we are going to comply, and this is how we're going to comply, we're going to create a committee, it's gonna study, and it's gonna produce a zoning ordinance that will be in compliance. The reality is, the ad hoc committee was never created. When I took office, we brought up the discussion again, would we like to do a committee, or we'd like to have the new planning director work to try to produce something that can be food for thought? Not the proposal, not the preference, not the thing that we want an up or down vote on. Simply food for thought for you to take out your pens and scribble on and change and just tear up if you'd like. Seemed to me that the consensus from the city council was, let's have John, who had just done this up in Georgetown, produce something that you can then chew on. We essentially have that, the language has always been, and it's easy enough, it's the template language. This is the, the recipe, certain options you could come up with. You can easily go through and take out this one and try to add one over here if you like. Any one of you individually or as a group can do that. The planning board may decide to do the same thing when they get some sort of intervention. I'm just trying to caution everybody, this is not, this is not like, you know, the, the, the good energy proposal we just confronted, where the mayor has an idea and he's really hoping you'll bless. That's not what this is, this is more like what Lou and Darlene, I think, just did when you eliminated the cluster zone.
Yes.
You guys decided, that, if I could finish.
Sure.
You guys decided that the way things were moving in the world, it was time to change our zoning ordinance to eliminate something that you didn't think was of the best interest of the city. I didn't send out a cluster zoning change, John didn't. You guys decided that a zoning ordinance change was important. In this case, the state is telling us, comply or not, there were, there's a template, there are rules. This council could just as easily do everything John's doing now if it wanted. Granted, it's complicated, more complicated than a cluster zone, but the point is still the same, it's a zoning change. I'm very grateful that John came on board, had the experience previously wrestling with this issue, and he's done a ton of work, working with the consultants, simply reading them, the law and the template. We have something for this council to now look at, send over to the planning board, and begin the process if you'd like. But it's not something that is all done with no more input available from the council. It's really the beginning, not the end, it can be done in a month, or as quickly as you'd like. But it's just the beginning, I don't want anyone to feel like we're ramming something down your throat because we're not, I'm as offended by this law as anybody in this room. But this community made a decision that we were going to comply, this is the path to compliance.
Yes, Councilor.
The community didn't make that decision, the former mayor made that decision. You are now the mayor.
Yep.
And you and I have had conversations about not pursuing this, about, and, and you've told me point-blank, and I under, I understand your position, Mayor, that you, you think we need to just comply. That, that is your position now as the.
I'll tell you about my position.
Um, you don't want to fight the, the governor, no, I, you've explained it.
Well, I'd like to at least be clear, on a public, good.
Yeah, sure.
So I, I, I have the same initial reaction to this law as I know you do, as I know many of you do, that this was the state telling a local community what's best for them, and we did not.
And I know how you feel about that.
I'm opposed to it.
You're opposed to it.
I also know that the community in the form of the former mayor and the city council at the time decided we were not going to comply. Then when we found out that there was more and more at risk if we didn't comply, pending lawsuits, additional state funding in jeopardy, the former administration changed the position and sent a letter to the state saying, we will comply, and we'll comply in the form of an ad hoc committee that creates a zoning ordinance that will comply. That stuff didn't happen, the stuff we said we were going to do didn't happen. So when I took office, I said, we have to do something. Could have easily taken the position that the city council will now bring this up again and choose the path. But I heard from this council in committee a couple of different times was, let's get something produced that we can look at and, and digest and put through the process. That's what we've done. It doesn't change my initial, you know, reaction to this law. I'm still as offended as you are. But my, my opinion is that right now, compliance will be the better option. Against my, my wishes and my preference, because I do feel it's overreach from the state, but I believe that the risks outweigh whatever benefit it might be to not comply right now. That's my position. This council has the full authority to vote tonight not to comply. Tell John, tear it all up, forget about it, go work another, you have the full authority to do this, you always have. All right, that wasn't the sense I got from this council, you, you didn't want to do that, you wanted to go through this process.
Some of us do.
That's why we're going through the process. At any, to your point, Mr. President, at any point along the way, you can say, timeout.
Mr. President. All right, so, so having said that, President.
Yeah, but can we hear from some other councilors too, please? I'd like to hear.
To the point that the mayor was just making about having something sent down. So I, I think that's how we started this conversation, I asked, when you're gonna send something down, you were asking about the maps, can't you just send something down so we can get the, the public process going, John?
I want to, frankly, Mr. President, I, um, I want to lend some advice, I think it's a stew of advice, and, and I've said it before to the planning board, this council, and I've said it to the mayor. There's nothing wrong with taking our time with this, we do have, you know, we can all have a meeting December thirty-first for lunch, you know, right before New Year's, and take a vote at that point in time, whether we're going to comply or not. But you can't just do that, that afternoon, you have to have a public hearing, the planning board, a public hearing. You can suspend the vote of the council until December thirty-first, and I'm saying this because a lot could happen, and a lot has happened. I, I said, right out of the gun, right out of the starting move, hey, uh, wait to see what happens with all of these towns defending the gate now, what happens if a couple of dozen decide not to, even a dozen, and that's happened. You know, there were, there were quite a few towns that are not voting in favor of this, okay? The state's trying to paint a rosy picture that while everyone's complying or they're passing it over, they have to fall, Tommy, a lot of towns will fall, Tommy, take a second, bite of the apple, you know? And they're all waiting to see what happens. But enough towns say, no, um, this problem, there's a political problem with it. And that political problem is that people are saying, hey, why are you taking away our right to plan for our community, our, our communities, communities that don't have sufficient water, don't have sufficient sewer capacity, to take on the growth that's commanded or demanded of communities by this? You know, and, and I portray that Georgetown using an example, and all those towns in, in North Shore, they don't have water, infinite water supplies, even for their existing residents. And they take on twenty-four percent more additional housing, multi-family, you know, hey, where are they supposed to get the water from? They don't have enough now, uh, they don't have sewer, how do you fit fifteen units of housing on an acre with no sewer? I mean, that's a complicated subject system, uh, and expensive. You know, who's going to pay for them to have municipal sewer to, uh, implement? You know, that's billions of dollars to do something like that, putting municipal sewer. So this is, you're gonna do it, we don't, now how you're gonna do it, you're gonna do it. Well, how do you do something, how, so if this is litigated and effectively litigated, um, you know, how do you stay their way with demanding that communities, you know, create all this housing that they have no resources for? You can't live very far without water, you need proper septic capacity. You know, so they're saying, hey, you build it, and hope you have enough air in the community for everybody. And though, by the way, you do need water, we, we know that, but I don't know how you're gonna do it. So they're not providing for the system of planning that communities have to be in the business of in order to plan for the communities properly. You know, you have to have the, the, the resources, water, sewer, energy.
Teacher.
Yeah, finding, just do all of that stuff, and, you know, it's, like, somebody came up and was saying, yeah, I know how we can create more housing and a lot of it, let's pass amendment language of three-A and just throw it down their throats, and, uh, we'll be done with it, we've done our job, it's up to them to, you know, plan their way out of chaos, you know?
Can we do some more detail?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think I've waited a little bit.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, uh, we'll be here.
So, the concern I have here is we're getting too bogged down in the semantics of the process, okay? And as the ordinance chair, if I have to go and stop moving forward and getting something done here, then let's do it. But when I saw the presentation by Director Cashell previously, where he had a draft amendment, already drafted, I would have thought the approach would have been filing it from the planning board.
That's where it's.
What does that make any difference from what has ever come down with a zoning change from the planning board or the planning director that we've done before? Frankly, I think the comparison, Mr. Mayor, that, well, you're trying to compare apples and oranges, Mr. Mayor, when you say you were here with the, with the electricity aggregation? Yeah, I would file that too if I thought it was a good idea, because you're saving the taxpayers money. This is a hot-button controversial issue that everybody's kicking around like it's a hot potato right now. So you know what, if the case in point needs to be that, as the chairman of ordinance, John, send me the word document with that, with that proposed amendment, please, and we'll, I'll file it and we'll work on it in the ordinance committee, if that needs to be done, all right? Because I'm, I'm getting very frustrated here because it seems like everybody's kicking it around to everybody else. When somebody needs to step up and take a leadership role here, I'm glad to do it.
And at the end of the day.
That's not the issue.
Well, what are.
Well, I think the issue, Mr. Mayor, is that.
Being dumped off.
There was a process that could have occurred here, that never did.
It is occurring.
It is, but we have nothing before us right now. There, there could be open meeting law violations for us to deliberating process on a filing that is here at a presentation and public comment period. There is no order before us, there is no ordinance change, this has just been updated. Correct, but it says on this filing from the committee on liaison, presentation and public comment, and we're not taking public comment.
Shit.
I just, it's, it's, it's frustrating because I think we're all just as concerned as everybody else in this room about this particular thing.
If I could just clarify, may, maybe, maybe what I said.
But the passing around of responsibility on who's gonna be acting on this, let's just come out and say it.
Simply making the point that it's, what we're talking about is an ordinance change, and I feel like the council is waiting for a whole bunch of things to happen, and I'm just trying to remind you that you have the authority at any moment to, to move forward on all of this stuff, okay?
I'm, I'm, I'm. I'm glad to file it, while rolling.
Because I feel.
I just think it could emanate from the planning board director's office.
Typically overlaid to.
Or the planning board itself.
I feel, I, I agree with you, all I'm saying is, we're in a position right now where we have, we have a, a template already that doesn't really change much, the language is what the language is. The meat of this issue is where would we want to put this if we comply? That's really.
That's really all we're talking. Where do we want to put? It doesn't really matter. You know, the technical language, that's going to be what it's going to be.
Well, because, and it's, in all honesty, none of us here are planners, other than that gentleman right there. Okay, so, my hope is that once we get this ball rolling, there's gonna be continued collaboration. Because I've heard that there've been other councilors that have met with Mister Cashell, and I felt because the train station involved their wards, that they should be the primary, you know, feedback folks on this. But I mean, if, once we're moving forward, I mean, we're gonna need input, John.
Yeah.
We're gonna need the input because I don't want to make a change within any zoning ordinance in our ordinance committee that ends up really screwing the taxpayers of the city of Woven.
That's right.
I don't need that, I need to lean on your experience of what other communities are doing. Okay? This is a part-time job for me, I do my best to make it a full-time job. You, and you are here full-time.
Yeah.
We need your advice about what's going on and what other communities are doing for this, because I cannot be thinking about MBTA communities law all the time, or, as you can see, it will drive me crazy.
John needs your advice on what you might want to see in something that's produced before you, when he's received that advice from several.
I don't think, I don't think we've seen anybody oppose any measure that, that has been proposed to us, any scenario.
No, I don't, I don't see you have either. No.
I just can't, I can't even believe that you people are talking like this, I know, I know.
Please.
Very frustrating.
Let's take, can I get a motion for a five-minute reset?
I'll make a move.
Second.
All in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
I just have one more.
Has the floor.
I just have one comment. And, and I don't want people to take my temper there in a personal light, okay? These, these things matter, and they matter to my constituents. And I want to make sure that we're doing what's in the best interest of the city and the taxpayers. And that, you know, to even to Counselor Campbell's point, we don't want to waste any time either to do it. We want to get that information out there in a public forum so we can have the discussions that we need. And now that I'm seeing the direction that the mayor and the planning director want to take, I will file the zoning amendment within.
Notness. I'm sorry.
Alright, no.
I'm gonna hear from the mayor.
And what am I missing?
I was simply saying that was an option this council could always take, doesn't have to be that way, I just.
But in my, but in my sense, in my sense, I would rather have something filed so that we can have official deliberations on the matter, rather than us, all of us walking on eggshells right now. Because this really isn't something that's for the council, it's just an update, a public discussion.
And the mayor, planning director can file.
And I want, and I don't also want to, I want to make sure that we're doing this the right way so that the least amount of taxpayer dollars is spent to get it right.
I may have been misreading the room and sensing frustration on the part of the council. Where is the thing?
Yeah.
All I was trying to say was, and a thing can come from anywhere, so we all know that. First, we all acknowledge that, but I think what, fine.
Where I'm getting at is, it's just, it's great to have these meetings and updates, and, you know, we got a memo this evening from a consultant. But, let's, let's roll our sleeves up and, and really get into it then. If it's something that needs to be filed in ordinance, I'll file it. I'm not, I'm not a huge fan of the ordinance personally myself, in the sense of adhering to the Commonwealth, but here's the thing, here's the thing. We can get bogged down in a legal quagmire for as long as we want on this, okay? I do not remember many cases in which a municipality has gone up against land court, gone up against the Commonwealth, or this, or the Supreme Judicial Court, and been found in favor of. And we have multiple projects in the city of Woven where that process was entertained and entered into, and it's come back to bite us in the butt. Especially that project up in North Woven. Alright? So, I think if we roll up our sleeves, get into that ordinance committee and get working on this, get a public hearing up and running so that we can talk about this further and get more public input. Because I think, Mister Mayor, what we were hoping was there was some sort of community meeting that could have been held, because to be brutally honest with you, I haven't had much for constituent outreach in the sense of any constituents reaching out to me about concerns about this, because it is a very confusing ordinance, because nobody knows where the zone could go, other than the 75% by the train and then 25 elsewhere. So there's a lot of moving parts here. So I think having more of those meetings where we can actually roll up our sleeves, deliberate actual, you know, potential language in the zoning ordinance and the maps, I would feel more comfortably if all of us could really say what we really wanted to say about these maps. I don't feel comfortable talking about which option I'm in favor of, or what we could do and move around without a file.
Yeah, this was.
We had a little sidebar going ahead.
Yeah, this is just the.
Right.
Yeah.
Our attempt to try to understand from the city council what type of stuff it would like to see in the draft, that's all. I mean, I feel like we all just talked past this, past each other for one and a half hour. Because there is no real controversy here as far as I can tell. None of us like this. We're just trying to figure out a way to get something that perhaps we can get compliance and, and minimize the impact on the city of Woven. I just wanted to be clear that the, the process did allow for this to, to take a different route. Clearly, when I took office, the first thing I did is I found a planning director who had done this before and was prepared to get us up and running.
Right.
And he's been doing that for the last several months. He's been seeking the input from this body and, and from the, the planning board members and from his team and from our consultant. What to put in this draft. It could, I, I always felt like the more input we got from this council early, the earlier the better, and the more the better. So that what, what is then put on the table has a chance. It's not something that people say, where did this come from? You know, I, I had no input in this, and they want to start over. I really was just seeking as much input as possible from the council. To your point about what's in front of you tonight, I hear you. We should tread lightly about votes or any of that stuff, this is a discussion, it's an update. But it was supposed to be a back-and-forth where we got some more direction from what John would then send out. That's really all this was.
That's awesome.
I, I feel like maybe.
That's great.
In full circle and now we're good again.
Yeah, John's gonna send something.
I'll be reaching out to both of you. To schedule a meeting to sit down then, how's that?
Yeah.
As the ordinance chair.
John's gonna send something to us that we can start publicly discussing.
If I could ask you, if I could.
He's gonna file.
My understanding is the process is that there would be a draft. It would be on the council agenda. And fairly quickly it would then be transmitted to the planning board, after we begin the process.
Mm-hmm.
Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple, a couple of things.
You have the floor.
One thing I have.
Counselor DeMiro.
I think I have to mention yet, the, the zoning ordinance itself, the consultant is ready to scrutinize and match it up extra-plate with our zoning ordinance, and make sure we're not missing anything.
Sure, yeah.
So, in all likelihood, when we get that back, that language won't have to change at all relative to it complying with 3A. The, the, the cloud still that has to be worked out is where the city ultimately wants to locate the overlay district. What it wants to be included and doesn't want to. Now, before you go to a public hearing to know this, right? It has to pass muster with legal to make sure we generalize enough the language, the planning board public hearing, as well as the council public hearing. So that if changes of the location of the overlay districts happening, there's any tweaking of the zoning ordinance, that it can be, it can be done without having to start all over again. So, before we get to that final point where we're going to advertise this for a public hearing, you know, the language has to be such that, you know, amendments can be made to it, again, we don't have to go back to square one. Uh, and there's, there's legalese to do that. So we're not just spinning our wheels, having to republish a public hearing. And I'm saying this because we, I want to produce a product that's going to have a lasting effect that when it's ultimately voted somewhere down the line, months ahead, that it's all been in accordance with the legal requirements of the ordinance, they haven't significantly changed it so that they have to start all over again. In this case, even if we did, it's just another public hearing, another, you know, published law.
But you would say, Director Cashell, we have enough.
Counselor Burn.
To move forward, sorry.
I just want to keep on. Please. You're done?
It, I'd say the consultant's gonna need at least another week to tweak it so I can produce to this council um, the final ordinance language that complies with 3A.
Apologies, President.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
But just so everybody's aware in the public how this all came about, the blue area. Darlene and I, counsel from Board Five, Board Six, because that's who's gonna, this is who, that's, that's who this is gonna impact, five and six, without a doubt. Because of Anderson and Mishawam, which we all know that. We had a meeting with Director Cashell, Darlene and I, and we sat, we had a meeting, we had to come up with some sort of an area. We debated that evening. The next day, I had a call with the mayor, he said, look, just, just gotta, as a template, just find an area. You guys, we'll start with an area. I believe that was our conversation. I said, okay. So, we all know that I'm the field man, I, I went out and I poked around for like that whole weekend. I drove around, drove around, looked at maps and everything else. And I found that it just made sense that this area that was proposed included the MBTA station, which anybody that knows anything about that station knows what's underneath. That's one. Their ordinance, they want it, and I think the state should have their land sequestered, because they're the ones that's jamming it down everybody's throats. So it's like, fine, and you're gonna put some of the bill. So I, I included that. I also included an area by which there are industrial buildings that are also in areas where the soil's warm, i.e. contaminated. There's the industrial park's superfund site right there. My way of thinking is, they want it, they're gonna come in and they're gonna pay the tab on cleaning this area up finally, once and for all. Instead of everybody else bestowing our 100-year problem on these developers that come in here, MBTA wants it, then you clean up the mess that theoretically was your fault in the first place. So, they're gonna clean it up, if they should choose to build in this area. My other reason for doing, or proposing this 54-acre parcel on the east side of the railroad was because it's right beside 93. There's access to 93 through Presidential, and I have also proposed that in Zerona-Boston Street, just over the proposed new bill that's, the new bridge that's currently being built, you tie Zerona-Boston Street, which is currently CCF, Cabo-Cabin and Forbes property, that has already been approved for 250 units. You tie that 250-unit parcel into Atlantic Gap, which is the horseshoe loop coming out of Anderson Station to Commerce Presidential. Again, trying to find arteries that exit the traffic towards the highways and not throughout the city. My other reason for using that area was because, one, the soil, the convenience to 93, but as well as there's also high-end commercial buildings down. And again, I strongly suggest we do not topple our commercial real estate. Those are our cash registers that we rely on. So I also tried to find an area where there was basically land that was questionable. And the buildings that are down there, they're gonna have to pay a substantial amount of money to buy those buildings, to tear them down, to build apartments. That's gonna hold some people back, not only for buying the real estate, but also cleaning up the, the land that they sit on, once and for all. So that's a pretty hefty tab before you can even get permitted to build your so-called apartments. I also wanted to stay away from Mishawam. I don't think Mishawam Station should be used. I was down there, I was down there two weeks ago. I sent President Dylan pictures on my visit. I was standing on the platform as the train went by doing probably 60 or 70 miles an hour. That ain't no whistle stop. I was right on the platform, I didn't get sucked into the vortex beyond me, that's how fast he went by me. The place is dilapidated, it's, 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 it's falling apart. It hasn't been used in decades. But that's not to say that the state couldn't request us to use that area. I do not want to use that area, and I believe Counselor Bruin is on the same page as me. It's too congested at Mishawam, Washington Street, Commerce. The place is a parking lot now, as well as that half-mile radius, if we include Mishawam, wanders and meanders into residential homes. You've got, there's homes on Mishawam, Wildwood Street, Olympia Avenue, Jan Street, uh, uh, Emerson, Alice Road, all the way up to the senior center. Bitchittars, I mean, we're, we're talking Forest Park, we're talking Alvin Street. These guys are gonna come in there, these developers, they're gonna start gobbling up my residents, my neighbors that are second and third generation up there. They'll start gobbling those homes up to get their five acres. And then, and then, and I know what they're gonna push. Oh, well, it'll be energy conservation and the open space and all this other stuff, and it's a waste of space, and we should be using that, that area more appropriately. No, you're not gonna start tearing down, you know, 100-year communities to build these things. And that was another reason why I wanted to keep it down in the industrial park, in the easterly side of the railroad at Anderson Station. And do not want to decimate residential, single-family home communities. That's a no-no. This, and I'll say it. This law that got handed down to us, that's being forced on us, sucks. I do not like it, it's bad enough. I got an industrial park that I've had in my backyard since 1970, and I've been there for 52 years. My father knew what he had. My grandfather had a farm on New Boston Street, that got eminent domain, that got taken away. I had another grandfather that got eminent domain, land taken to build 93. We're not gonna do that to the residents up in North Woven, it's not happening. And if we have to say no to it, and we go to war with the state, then we go to war with the state. I don't care what it costs. But you're not gonna start taking people out of their homes to have them leveled, to build apartment buildings. And you're definitely not gonna have residential homes that are single-family, that you can stick three and four units in. That's O2. I don't know what they're thinking, this ain't flying. And I am sure, once the residents hear this, this message, that they can understand, because I'm talking their language. Yeah, your, your emails are gonna start lighting up, Mister Mayor and everybody else's, because they are not gonna be happy with this. That's why I chose, hold on a second, let me finish. That's why I proposed that area up at Anderson. I've even asked State Hagerty, uh, uh, State Representative Rich Hagerty. I said, look, this thing's a juggernaut, and you're coming into communities, especially Woven, and you're forcing it upon us. I believe that the legislature and the governor would be better off if they could custom tailor this to each city and town so that we're, we can work with them back and forth. Instead of demanding you get, you know, you have to take 26, 2,631 apartments and, and, and put them in your community. We've already got quite a bit. And to Counselor DeMiro's point, we got stuck with that in North Woven, at Woven Heights. There's 168 units up there, Santula wanted 12 townhouses, now 168 units up there, probably over 350 people up there. We don't want this to keep happening in our community. We're already overpopulated, we're congested in this area, and that's the reason why I chose this area. I just wanted that to be out in the open and for the fellow councilors in the committee. So that's how I arose to this. But again, this was just a proposal, and that was my reason to provide.
No, it's fine too.
Well, I appreciate your work, John.
Agreed with everything you've said, and it's absolute sound reasoning, okay? And who came up with this solution in the overlay district as you proposed? And, you know, I'm calling it whose district because I don't want to take any credit away from what you came up with. It's, it's a condensed area. It's probably the most astute area that we can designate as an overlay district. It's probably the most astute area that we can designate as an overlay district without impacting the residential neighborhoods of Woburn. And that's what we really should protect. I said that publicly. You know, you want to protect where you can residential, single-family residential neighborhoods. That's what really makes the community, you have to protect those areas at the top. You don't, you don't have a municipality, a town, even though we're a city. Woburn's a city that's really considered a town. It's always been described that way. So in that, because we have great residential neighborhoods. This is still a city primarily comprised of residential neighborhoods. We have a great tax base that helps lessen the congestion for the impact of residential taxes on the residents because we have such a large commercial base. Fully agree with you. But we're not even considering that. We realize not to consider what you just described. You know, it's kind of scaring people. We're not doing that, we've gone past that. I think everybody at this table would say, hey, we agree with your condensed overlay district. I don't know how anybody could argue with that.
I agree.
Logically. So that's, I'd say, my suggestion is to stick with that. It's a great way to deal with this thing. And we still have until December 31st, it's a sign.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell.
Yeah. Lou, thank you so much for that. How many units do we have, John? Do we make the amount of units that we need, over the 2,600, in this scenario five?
Yeah, that complies.
That complies.
It doesn't mean we're building anything, it just complies.
Right, right. Honestly, I think it's brilliant. I thought you had talked to me before about it. Your thinking was spot on, that's what other communities were doing. I just feel like you went even one step further. Great job on this. Just, just a couple of things. I just want the residents to know, and Darlene, I know you're passionate and you're concerned about it, and we all are. I just want to make
This is the best scenario, though. Lou and I have met on this many times. If we have to do something. Yeah, sorry, it is the best scenario.
I just wanted people to know that we're not behind and that we have not been doing nothing. That I just want to make clear. We're not behind the ball, you know. We have now these different scenarios to look at. And I think that's important for the residents to know that we have been working on this. Now we're finally getting some of the most important information, which is now these scenarios and having Counselor DeMambro describe what this area is about and that we do comply in this area. And that's huge. I would love to take this, and as you said, the ordinance, you have a particular template that you go with the ordinance. I say we take that template and fit this in.
Counselor Campbell, we just can't deliver.
No, 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 we won't deliberate, this is my comment. Okay, so maybe I'll cut that off. Yep.
I appreciate it.
Because I feel like we're making good progress. I feel like at the beginning of the meeting, that we were making it more complicated than it needed to be. But I think now we've all come to a consensus as to how to move forward with this, and I do appreciate that.
Thanks.
And that's, that's all. Yeah, that's all I need to
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You're good? Counselor Boone.
And again, I'm not sure how it all came here to begin with. But at the end of the day, my ask right now is the same as my ask was at the beginning of this meeting. Director Cashell, do you have enough that you can send down something formal from the planning director's office to get it so it's at a point where we can start actually legally, publicly delivering? And in having the community meetings?
I would say after this discussion, absolutely.
Okay.
Hundred percent.
And I know you said you had to wait a week for Mr. Davis. He has to turn around something.
Yeah, he just has to work on the ordinance. Make it precise. So that we won't be faced with, you know, massive change that we'll have to, you know, have another public hearing after public hearing.
And again, I'm not sure how my ask, asking that in the beginning got to all of this. I was just waiting for something formal because we can't deliberate on any of this. So I appreciate the fact that your office is going to send something down.
I want to give you credit again, Lou. I think his explanation tonight here set it off. That's how, you know, he was able to derive that condensed zoning district. That now we know factually, we know factually today, we got news of this just before the weekend, that it does comply. They worked out the numbers and it complies. And, you know, we can now move forward and get the ball rolling.
Right. And we could do it in those other spots, and it would be less dense. But the results of the neighborhoods would be awful. There would be less units, for sure, but the results would be not so good.
We're making the best out of that situation. But while we come up here and what we've done today, now we can move forward.
If everyone's good?
Yep.
Just from the chair, one question. Just to be crystal clear for the public, for all of us. December 13th, we decided, as hard as we worked on everything, we don't want to go. We're not tied in up until December 31st, when we send everything in and say we're go. There's no mechanism by sending anything in early that ties us into being in, that ties us to a no vote, not happen.
It only happens, it's only final, until there's a final vote taken.
I want the public knowing, everyone to feel comfortable here. So that's where I was going.
Final vote of the city council, signed into law by his line.
And that's what I wanted to make crystal clear, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion in the second to adjourn, all in favor. We are adjourned.
I think he's all three.